Tonight's February 6, 2024. I'll start with introductions. To my left is Planning Board Member Rob Trusolo, Planning Board Member Peter Coffin. I'm chairing this evening for Lynn Merrill, I'm Robin Duque. To my right is Robin Carter, the Land Use Administrator, Chris Bashaw, who's the Selectman's Rep to the Planning Board, Peter Bakie, Planning Board Member, and Glenn Greenwood, Town Planner. So we have three public hearings on the agenda this evening. We will start with the first. PSNH Doing Business as EverSource, 363 Transmission Line Structure, MAP R18, Lots 18, 29, 29A, 34, and 35B. So if the applicant wants to come and sort of describe what it is they're looking to do, these handheld microphones, I guess, just press, you don't have to hold it, just press until the green button comes on.
Hi, my name's Andrew Mahoney. I'm with VHB.
Travis Yando, Eversource Licensing and Permitting.
Yeah, so we're here on behalf of the proposed utility maintenance work on the existing 363 transmission line in Kingston, New Hampshire. Okay. Yeah, so we're here on behalf of the utility maintenance, the proposed project on the 363 transmission line in Kingston. As part of the proposed project involves one utility structure replacement in the town of Kingston due to previous damage on that structure. So the replacement structure will be installed within the existing structural footprint and connected to the existing overhead circuit prior to the removal of the existing structure. A portion of the proposed project to the Wetland Conservation District, which the project right-of-way only contains wetlands, but it was, due to the access road through the right-of-way intersecting the 75-foot wetland buffer and inland jurisdictional wetland, we had, we provided this conditional use permit application. Due to past projects along this right-of-way, existing access roads currently exist within the 75-foot wetland buffer that will be utilized for this project to help minimize impacts to that wetland buffer. And then approximately 4,080 square feet of temporary wetland impact will be required to replace the structure for 100-foot by 100-foot work pad that helps stage crews and equipment. These 4,080 square feet will be timber matted to additionally minimize impact to the wetland. And as soon as the work is completed, those timber mats will be removed and they will not be in place for longer than one growing season. Access to the right-of-way will occur off of an off-right-of-way access of New Boston Road, and the crews will travel the extent of that until they reach the right-of-way and then travel within the right-of-way. And no additional tree clearing will be required for this project.
Additionally, I just wanted to add that BMPs will be implemented throughout the project through New Hampshire's BMP manual. We also have VHB doing weekly inspection monitors out there, inspections with reports that go to us, so we are keeping eyes on the project as it proceeds.
Glenn, do you want to go through your comments?
Certainly. I'm not going to read it, because it's lengthy. I guess, no, I'm sorry, I guess I am, because it's lengthy, but it says what has to be said. So I have that this is an application being submitted in accordance with Section 202.8 of the Town Zoning Ordinance and is required for the proposed work to allow impacts within wetlands and their associated buffer areas protected under the Wetlands Conservation District. This is the first public hearing for this proposal to complete a structural replacement within the Eversource Public Utility Easement in central Kingston. The Planning Board needs to consider invoking jurisdiction upon the application to begin the 65-day time clock for entering a decision. From my perspective, the application is complete. The proposed maintenance work and structural replacement all occurs within the existing easement. There are 4,000 square feet of wetlands impact and 11,000 square feet of wetland buffer impacts. Nearly all of this is temporary, and the utility has a stringent work plan vetted by NHDES for these activities. The Planning Board needs to consider the applicant's request for a conditional use permit. The ordinance requires that we solicit input from the Conservation Commission, which we do with every application. Since I wrote this, we did get a letter from the Conservation Commission that's part of the record, and Robin, you'll probably read it later. The applicant has provided written responses to the three criteria addressed in the conditional use permit, and I have no issues with their responses. They have dealt with work in other communities. They really do a very good job of minimizing the impact that they create to wetlands for this kind of activity. And NHDES does watch them closely, but the consultants that they have in-house are really very good at what they do. Watching them move those mats in Brentwood, it's incredible that you get so much done and have it look so untouched within 18 months. It's really remarkable. All right, I'll stop my soapboxing.
Thank you.
We did, as you mentioned, get comments from the Conservation Commission, so I'm just going to read this letter dated January 6 of 2024. Travis Yando of Eversource and Sherry Treffrey of VHB appeared before the Conservation Commission on December 7, 2023 to present a plan to replace a single transmission tower located on the Eversource easement adjacent to the Kingston Power River Conservation Area. The tower will be accessed from New Boston Road power easement gate through the portion of the Blue Trail leading to ET's Landing, which runs through the Eversource easement and will temporarily impact the wetland area across the trail, along the trail. This is the same area where we have submitted a permit by notification to construct a culvert to facilitate crossing a wet area on the trail. New Hampshire DES has referred both KCC's and VHB's permit applications to New Hampshire Fishing Game's Nongame and Endangered Wildlife Program as they're concerned about impacts to a wetland that is potential habitat for endangered landlings turtles or threatened spotted turtles. Both applications are currently under review by New Hampshire Fishing Game. The Conservation Commission understands the necessity of this project, but any construction activity in that area will need to be carefully monitored in time to minimize impact on wildlife. The best time of year to do the project would be in winter when the ground is frozen and less easily disturbed, and when there will be less impact to seasonal wildlife activity and migration. We also understand that any work in this area will be dependent on New Hampshire Fishing Game's response. Additionally, Conservation recommends that to ensure public safety, the town temporarily close the Powar River Conservation Area Trails. Sergeant, one work by Eversource VHB is in progress. Respectfully, Kingston Conservation Commission. And then we also have a letter from the Town Engineer, Dennis Quintal, dated January 12, 2024. And it just reads, Dear Members of the Planning Board, after brief review of this application, I believe they must comply with an NHDES wetlands permit. I have no engineering comments at this time. Any other discussion, comments, questions, thoughts from the board? Motion to invoke jurisdiction?
Motion to invoke jurisdiction.
Motion by Peter Bakie, second by Peter Coffin. All those in favor? All those, pass unanimously, I don't need to go through all that. So I guess the question is, what action are we able to take? We can just have a contingency pending the approval from New Hampshire Fishing Game, correct?
You should read into the record their responses for the conditional use permit.
Yep. And then add the condition of Fishing Game.
At some point, we might want to do that.
Perfect. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? Seeing nobody, we will both open and close public comments at 6:55. Anybody have it open? You're going to make me read the whole thing, aren't you, again?
I just, I just want to make mention before I move on. We, Eversource, did receive Fishing Game BMPs as well as the town did too, since that letter was, was written. So we have both, both those BMPs for, for us and them already established. Yep.
But the permits, you're still going to have to wait for Fishing Game and DES? Permits from Fishing Game and DES you're still waiting for, right?
So the BMPs that Fishing Game provides is part of the permit that we received.
Oh, you have received.
Yeah, yeah. And also from DES, we have received all of our SPNs for this project as well.
Did I see you receive BMP permit?
Yeah, I believe so. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We received that like within the last week or two.
Yeah.
Well, is enough, enough area to qualify for that? Enough area to qualify for that on these transmission towers, the AOT?
It's because they, when they submit to the state, they're doing it for their entire transmission.
Yeah, so we have, we have other structures as part of the project.
Yeah, I was going to say, this can't qualify in this two towers here.
Robin, do you just want me to read? I mean, they've outlined it with the different sections in their application.
Sure, that'd be great.
So one of the section provided by the applicant, which references our town ordinances, the conditional use permit. In accordance with the requirements for a conditional use permit, the construction and maintenance of, Adam, are you reading me on this?
That's quiet.
The construction and maintenance of utility lines within an existing right-of-way in the Wetlands Conservation District is a permitted use subject to the review if the proposed project does not conflict with the purposes of the district found in Article 202, Section 8B. Evidence that the proposed project does not conflict with these purposes is listed below. The first section, the proposed construction is essential to the productive use of land, not within the Wetlands Conservation District. The response from the applicant is the proposed project involves the maintenance of an existing use that occurs within a maintained electric transmission line right-of-way. The proposed project is part of PSNH's ongoing maintenance program conducted to ensure reliable electric service for their customers. The PSNH transmission system is an integral part of the regional power system, delivering electricity to customers throughout New England. It is critical that the system remains operational without interruption from preventable outages. Section B, design and construction and maintenance methods will be such as to minimize detrimental impact upon the wetland and will include restoration of the site as nearly as possible to its original grading condition. The applicant's response to this section is impacts to natural resources and wetlands compromising the Wetlands Conservation District have been avoided to the extent practical while still accomplishing the project objectives. Proposed access roads within the right-of-way will follow existing access ways as much as possible. Where wetlands and/or streams must be crossed to gain access to replacement structures, wooden timber mats will be installed to create a solid traveling surface while resulting in minimal soil disturbance and rutting within these resources. Timber mats disperse the weight of the construction equipment, minimize soil disturbance and rutting. Following the removal of timber mats from wetland areas, any exposed soil will be stabilized with weed-free straw and allowed to reestablish. Due to the use of timber mats, it is anticipated that minimal restoration within the right-of-way will be required, and that natural vegetative recolonization of impacted areas will occur during summer vegetative growth periods in 2024. If some areas are slow to establish appropriate wetland seed mixes may be applied. Temporary soil stockpiles, if applicable, will be temporarily stabilized and surrounded by erosion controls, i.e. silt sock to prevent against sediment migration. Crews will install erosion control and sediment control barriers in accordance with the utility, best management practices manual, and as dictated by site conditions, selected BMPs may include straw waddles, silt fence, wood chip, compost berms, tubes, and other approved BMPs. Erosion controls will be inspected and maintained throughout the duration of construction activities. It will not be removed until project work is complete and the project area is stabilized in accordance with New Hampshire DES Chapter WT 303.04, Reps. AF. Section C, no alternative route which does not cross a wetland or has less detrimental impact on the wetland as feasible. Applicant's response is, due to the fact that a wetland complex spans the entire width of the existing maintained 363 transmission line right-of-way, an alternative route is not feasible to complete proposed work, and off-right-of-way access road is being used to access the proposed structural replacement which helps limit impacts to additional wetland crossing. This minimization of impacts would not be possible if crews had to access the right-of-way from the next public road crossing. Wooden timber mats will be installed to create a solid traveling surface while resulting in minimal soil disturbance and rutting within these resources. Timber mats disperse the weight of construction equipment, minimize soil disturbance and rutting. Following the removal of timber mats from wetland areas, any exposed soil will be stabilized with weed-free straw and allowed to reestablish. Due to the use of timber mats, it is anticipated that minimal restoration within the right-of-way will be required, and that natural vegetative recolonization of impacted areas will occur during the summer vegetative growth periods of 2024. The project is part of PSNH's ongoing maintenance program conducted to ensure reliable electric service for their customers. The project is in the public interest and is compatible with the purposes of the ordinance as the transmission assets and right-of-way are in existing and essential use within the Wetlands Conservation District.
We didn't need to do those one at a time, right?
No, we could do them all at once.
Perfect.
I'll make a motion to grant the conditional use permit based off of the satisfactory answers provided by the applicant regarding the conditional use permit requirements in Section, Article 202, Section 8B.
Motion by Chris Bashaw, second by Peter Coffin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pass unanimously. Is there any further action we need to take with this?
I don't believe so.
Okay. So you are all set?
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Are you guys going to be able to do it this winter? I mean, you know, start like A-7?
You're heading out there right now? No.
We'll call, we'll get them on the phone right now. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
All right, next up, we have Selco Partnership, Doing Business as Verizon Wireless, off Hunt Road, MAP R1, Lot 1. And this is an application for a conditional use permit and site plan approval to construct and operate a 140-foot wireless telecommunications facility off of Hunt Road. If you could just state your name and who you're representing, and I'm sure you heard how to, you are.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name's Mark Bodwin from the Law Firm, Nixon Peabody, for the applicant Verizon Wireless. Sorry. My name's Mark Bodwin for the applicant Verizon Wireless from the Law Firm, Nixon Peabody.
Hi, folks. Chip Fredette here on behalf of Verizon Wireless Site Acquisition.
Good evening. Keith Valenti with C Squared Systems, RF consultant for Verizon Wireless on the project.
And we'll let you sort of give a rundown of what it is you're looking to do and take it from there.
Thank you very much. I'll just give a brief overview, then I'll hand it over to Chip, if that's okay. If you have questions, please feel free. Like you mentioned, we're here today to talk about fixing a service inadequacy in and around the town of Kingston. We're proposing to construct a new ground mount, 140-foot tall wireless telecommunication facility located off Hunt Road. The project consists of a 50-by-50-foot fence compound within which the pole will be constructed together with some other equipment on cement paths, as well as an ice dam, and we can get into that in a second. The project is located within the town's rural residential zoning district pursuant to Article 410 of the zoning ordinance. These facilities are permitted within the town upon the issuance of a conditional use permit.
Yeah, we can't really, you know.
I'm sorry. Apologize. I can just speak louder, too.
So the wireless facility pursuant to Article 410 of zoning ordinance is permitted within the town upon the issuance of a conditional use permit as well as a site plan approval from the Planning Board. We submitted those applications back on November 28th, and that's the background. I'll hand it over to Chip to go over the RF studies, if that's okay.
Yeah, he's going to bring you a better microphone for when you do speak.
I didn't know what's happening. I apologize.
Apologize.
Way better. Wow.
You want to say something to me, Keith? Hi, everyone. Again, Chip Fredette here on behalf of Verizon Wireless Site Acquisition Agent, working on the project. What I generally like to do when I start a presentation is to begin with the existing coverage map. So in Keith's report titled RF Report, I think it's probably an eight-and-a-half-by-11 report that you guys have, again, C Squared Systems RF Report, I turn nearly to the end of that report. It's the first of all of the propagation maps. I see we're struggling. It's Exhibit K of the application, Attachment, I'll find it for you. Thankfully, Exhibit K.
So it'll be an eight-and-a-half-by-11 piece of paper.
In the existing, Attachment A.
Want to get the big map set up?
Yeah. It's those colored photographs.
I have it there now.
Apologies, it is Exhibit F. Attachment A of Exhibit F.
I'm just going to stop for one second. If anyone from the public wants to take a peek at the plans, there are extra copies on the end of the table right next to the applicant.
Mr. Sir, coffee, the coverage map? Do you have that?
I don't believe there is in those.
Keith, Keith is setting up, Keith is setting up his easel with full-size map so everyone can see as we're going through it. Can everyone see the coverage maps that Keith put up there? Okay.
Booth, I can get them on the camera. I don't know if we want that.
Or anything, lack of coverage or an area where there's a high demand of capacity, or rather, a load, a high demand in need of more capacity or more service, we generally start the search with this map. Hi. And so what, so. Plastow in Kingston, from which we've received coverage today, we received service today. Provided subscribers. So what I'd like to do is I'll start with the top left of the page at our first existing site, and it's, we call it Hampstead East, Hampstead E. It's located here on the map, okay? That's a 167-foot monopole owned by SBA. It's on Colonial Drive, right behind East Coast Lumber. It was built actually by Nextel in 1999, so it's been almost 25 years now in existence. Verizon co-located on that site at the 125-foot elevation. So again, it's almost 170-foot monopole, owned by a tower company, developed by Nextel way back when, and Verizon's at the 125-foot center line, and from that site, that's the service footprint that we benefit from. Moving clockwise.
Top right.
Top. We call Kingston. That's 190-foot lattice tower off Route 125, just a few miles north of where we are here, a couple, maybe a mile and a half north of here, behind Dunkin' Donuts. That's owned by Crown Castle. So again, another site where Verizon co-located on an existing structure or existing tower. We are at the 178-foot center line on that tower, again, of that 190-foot lattice tower. Continuing clockwise to the bottom right-hand side of that page, to the site here, it's a site we call Kingston III. That's also another 190-foot lattice-style tower. That's at Granite Road, again, also owned by Crown Castle, and Verizon Wireless is at the 135-foot center line on that tower. And again, from that site, you can see the coverage footprint that it projects, partly Kingston, partly Plastow. Continuing around the horn is a site we call Atkinson, New Hampshire. That's a 160-foot monopole, originally developed by Mariner Tower, now owned by SBA Towers. Verizon Wireless is at the 120-foot elevation on that, on that site, monopole. East Coast Lumber, 1999, and we're only at the 143-foot center line. And so we're here today to try and solve that gap, to provide that additional capacity, provide additional coverage. In order to do that, we've identified this property here, of course, Mr. David Kimble's property, it's a little more than 50 acres in size, as a good. Can we flip the next map? And so when we perform our modeling, we flip to the next page, and of course, if you hadn't already seen it, this would be the proposed footprint from our site. Again, the idea here being that we're not, 20, 25 years ago, the goal was to string together all the highways, the interstate, so 111, 93, Route 16, 125, and as time has grown and people are using their handsets for more than just making phone calls, working from home, the demand for coverage in-home is greater and greater, and hence, the only way to accomplish that is to actually build a site within that area, within that gap in coverage. It can't be achieved by optimizing or adding carriers to the existing sites. Those are already serving, serving the areas that they're designed to serve. So again, that's the proposed footprint there on that map. I'll move to the site plan now, just a quick overview of that. I'll move to the site plan now, just a quick overview of that.
Chairman, Chair, I realize we've entered into the hearing portion of this, and I noticed in Glenn's remarks, there were some questions about DRI and stuff like that. We probably should take care of the housekeeping, the compliance with 12K7, all that kind of stuff, and maybe invoke jurisdiction, have you give a recommendation on completeness and things like that. I think just getting rid of that out of the way first would be useful. And I understand you're demonstrating the need for your tower, but I think we got ahead of ourselves a little bit in procedures. And so I think probably you should have the comments from Glenn and...
That's fine. We can certainly do that.
Sure.
You want me to read my opening paragraph that I talk about that?
That would be great.
All right. So I have that this is the first wireless communications tower for land located in the rural residential zone in South Kingston. The planning board needs to consider invoking jurisdiction of... ...a time clock for rendering a decision. From my perspective, the application is complete. The board needs, the board should consider if this application is one that rises to the level of a... From my perspective, it does not, but this is a decision for the... The application includes a very thorough... What can I do with my second page? I got it. Thanks. A very thorough review of both the town zoning ordinance regarding telecommunications facilities and the town's site plan review regulations, both of which apply to this application. There should be a waiver request offered by the applicant because they are requesting no preliminary meeting with the planning board. And then I just list my comments. To go to Peter's discussion about regional impact, because the state requires that we notify abutting communities, I don't really, it's my perspective that this doesn't rise to the need to have it declared a project of regional impact because the communities that are affected by it get direct notification from us. And so both the towns of Plastow and Hampstead receive that notification, and abutters to the property also receive that notification, even if they were in a town other than Kingston. But it's still, it's still certainly a discussion item that the board has every right to consider.
Which towns did you say were included in the notification?
Hampstead and Plastow.
And not Atkinson?
No, not Atkinson.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misjudged where that line was.
Yeah. The requirements are really because of the visual effect, and we'll talk about that range later. But I wanted to make the point that not only were they notified under 12K7 as you had requested, and that was more than two weeks ago, so they also received notification, the Carriage Town News, the paper of regional coverage, does, in their banner, they do send it to all residents of Plastow, Hampstead, also Atkinson, Sandown, and all the other areas that could possibly be affected. So the notification required under 12K7 was done. I wanted to make the point that the, in my opinion, is not the level of development of regional impact for a couple of reasons. One, it's not really a development. But two, and more importantly, the requirements for notification of affected communities outside the town of Kingston is of New Hampshire's statute, our 12K7 that we've been talking about, is more stringent, certainly more applicable to cell towers. And because it's more stringent, I think that solves the regional impact notification requirements. And so I would move that we consider it to be not a development of regional impact for those reasons. Yeah. I'm moving that we, that the board makes a determination that it is not a development of regional impact.
And it's not what?
There's a requirement that all developments that come before the planning board and zoning board and conservation commission be deemed, be decided whether they have regional impact. There is a regional impact to cell towers, especially, it's only 75 feet from the town line. The, there is a state law, however, that governs regional impact notification for cell towers specifically, and it has more stringent requirements than the development of regional impact rules, and they're more applicable to cell towers. And that requirement is that anything within a 20-mile radius that could, any town within a 20-mile radius that could see, that you could see the tower, 140 feet, AGL, you know, would be impacted. And so those towns, which were Plastow and Hampstead, which as you know are quite close, were notified, and so they've been given the notification of regional impact. Obviously, as a butters, if you're in Hampstead or Plastow, more likely Hampstead because most of the Plastow putting properties are town forests, you will receive separate, by mail, notification of the project, so that you could be here to hear this. So my motion was to say that this doesn't qualify under the requirements of, I can't remember the statute, but as a development of regional impact, because it's not really a development of any kind. It's a cell tower, and because the laws governing cell towers are more stringent, they, anybody who's affected by this tower has been notified, either directly as an abutter, or by notification in the paper, or a letter to the town government itself. So I think that notification, as I said, it's more stringent than the DRI notifications, and I think we're covered. So I made a motion that we do not deem it to be a development of regional impact, and one of the primary reasons is that all the impact notifications required by 12K7 have been done, and they were more stringent than the DRIs. So it's more of a technicality. We don't have, if we had determined it to be a development of regional impact, we'd have had to postpone the hearing, notify the Rocky and Planning Commission, and give them an opportunity to respond. And quite frankly, Glenn used to work with the Rocky and Planning Commission. I guess you could comment on whether they felt, whether Rocky and Planning Commission gives regional impact statements on cell towers.
If we had declared it as such, they certainly would have looked at the application.
Right.
But the application at hand is one that has very localized impacts.
Right.
The DRI call is much more prevalent when discussing impacts to aquifers or groundwater, surface water that goes in between communities. That's when that determination is really most effective. But they certainly would have looked at it if we had sent it to them.
Right. But to get back to...
When I was in charge of that committee, we never had substantive comments to make because we understood that it's a very localized issue.
So there is a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I don't think that, we don't understand what you're summarizing.
Oh, okay. Let me give it a... He's essentially saying, "We're not making a declaration of regional impact because, don't necessitate it for this project." But rationale for that is additionally that a cell tower project is held to a much more stringent standard through another RSA. So even if there was somebody that was on the fence about it being declared as a regional impact, they're gonna be... ...notification due to the subsequent RSA as well.
Where the notification has to be done before they can proceed with...
No.
We are the butters. That's why we...
That's why you've been notified.
We get through the application. All right. So there was a motion by Peter Coffin, a second by Peter Bakie. Any other discussion by the board? All those in favor? Aye. So that passed unanimously. Glenn, do you wanna... Comments, or are you... I mean, we can go back to the applicant, I feel like, to go through, yeah.
Finish their presentation.
So feel free to continue on.
All right. Thank you. So again...
I'm sorry.
Yep, go ahead, Glenn.
In my clouded mind, did you guys invoke jurisdiction?
No, we didn't. I was just gonna ask you, I'm gonna move to invoke jurisdiction because we've certainly had this planned. And it was incredible, you know, line by line from our ordinance and our regulations, and I like that because, boy, it makes it, it's a lot of reading, but it makes it easy for Glenn and everybody else to say that it is...
To see how you've addressed things.
Yeah. Because, quite frankly, that 30-day shot clock that started on November 29th when we received it, and was over long before the first hearing, Glenn was able to determine that we didn't have to send out an notification, "Oh, you're missing such and such," like the...
So do we have a motion for that?
So, yeah, I'm gonna make a motion that we accept jurisdiction.
I'll second that, and just for further discussion, so folks understand invoking jurisdiction is a procedural issue. It has nothing to do with granting them any conditional uses. It has nothing with granting them permission due to this project, just means the plan is complete enough for the board to continue the process of the hearing and then open up for public comment.
Motion by Peter Coffin, second by Chris Bashaw, to invoke jurisdiction. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Carry on.
Okay. Thank you. So again, the goal, the goal when trying to find, find a place to put, finding a new site, the first goal is to try to find the existing structure. And as I explained from our, with our coverage maps that Keith prepared for us, all of the sites from which Kingston and Hampstead and Plastow on that map currently enjoy Verizon service are... We didn't need to build a tower. If there's a tower, perhaps there's a rooftop we can use, perhaps it's a church steeple. It's my job to identify any and all potential co-locatable structures or opportunities prior to resorting to building our own tower. And in this instance here, unfortunately, there were no existing structures, be it towers, church steeples, commercial building rooftops upon which we could put our antennas, and thus we are looking at building a new tower. And so then, when I'm looking at, looking to try to find a land parcel for a new tower, and we're considering zoning, we're considering the size of the parcel, where can I bury this thing as much as possible so it's not as visible? Because that's really, at the end of the day, to what Peter was mentioning there, the impact from a cell site is really visual, hence RSA 12K in the 20-mile radius and notifying Salem. So we have a piece of land here that's a little over 50 acres large, in an area that's otherwise occupied by residential subdivision. So it makes the job tricky, but yet it stares, it glares at me as being kind of the first choice because it's the large parcel in the area, and of all the... Benefit from tree cover, and just the sheer size of the parcel to set the site back far enough so hopefully it's out of anyone's direct view.
Not possible.
That is correct. It is not possible, it is not possible to completely hide a cell site. They are not, they will be visible at some point. Someone's going to see it. And if I'm in it, folks...
Doing it this way will only lengthen the...
So I'm gonna turn to the site plan to sheet Z4. So titled Proposed Conditions Plan. And it shows, it shows the site in full, so... For Unit 1A, we're gonna follow Mr. Kimball's existing gravel dirt road back about 1,000, 1,500 feet, and the site that he made available to us is what you see here. We, when looking for a site, of course, the parcel size, zoning, all play a role in it. But once, once we're at the property, we are somewhat subject to what the landowner's willing. One of the stipulations, of course, I make upfront is that, you know, we're flexible, but I, the site needs to meet the code. I need to meet all setbacks associated with, with local zoning. And so with that in mind, we, there's a negotiation that ensues, and, you know, "I want you here, can we be there?" And X marks the spot, in this case, is here. One, we do meet all of the setbacks. Again, we're following the existing driveway down to the site. The lease area itself is 75 by 75. The proposed compound will only be 50 feet by 50 feet. And then everything associated with the facility, the tower, our radio equipment, and utility backboard will all be inside that fenced-in compound. We generally propose an eight-foot-tall chain-link fence with three stands of barbed wire. Of course, in the past, depending on how visible the site could be from neighbors, we've done stockade fences, vinyl privacy slating. It's really up to the board's purview in that regard. They're a quiet neighbor. They, once constructed, they generate maybe one visitor per month by our technician who's responsible for all these other sites in the area already. There's no routine business with heavy equipment. There's no lights. We've got, I'm sorry, I take that back. There'll be no light on the tower, so anyone who might have been concerned about there being a navigational beacon, that is not the case here. There is a backup generator, diesel-powered backup generator there for emergency purposes only. When the power goes out, we have battery backup that takes the first load, and then once the batteries are exhausted, then the generator kicks on and then provides us with that extended life for extended periods of outages, ice storms, the times when we need our connectivity most. Again, we, sites generate about one visit per month, no lights, no sound. Yeah, a pretty quiet neighbor. That's about all I had here unless you guys have questions about the plan itself.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I think this came in as, this came in as a comment from the select board also, but the fall zone for the tower goes in onto neighboring property. The question was from the select board was, would easement be required because of that? And I know it's a monopole, but they still, if you guys break, and if it blows over, which is what the fall zone is designed to do, it's be 140-foot radius extended to 175, I think, for the safety factor.
Yep.
So the question, I guess, is, are you gonna need to get an easement for your fall zone? And I think from Dennis's comments, which we can read later, the question is, why wasn't, why not move it over a little bit farther from the property line so that the entire fall zone would be within the existing property?
Sure. So good question. To answer your first question, no, we wouldn't require an easement. That's nothing that's written in the zoning ordinance, in Kingston's ordinance. And two, again, because it meets the ordinance, and the landlord said, "I want you as close to that direction of the side of the lot as possible so that I don't, you don't cut off my ability to reach the back of my lot," is why we're directed to go here. Again, I said, "I needed to be able to meet that test." The, it's actually a tower setback, right? I don't know if they... I don't know if they actually call it a fall zone.
Sorry, there's a, one is a tower setback, another is a.
Yep. Yeah, the regular building setback, sure. So we, we meet both, in the location that the landlord provided, I'm able to meet both those, those requirements. And we do, and we do have a letter for you from a, from one of our tower manufacturers explaining why it is that a monopole, if it were to fail, and, God, help us if it were, because we'd have a lot of other problems going on at the same time. But if we were to fail, that would fail in half as opposed to falling from the base. Do you want to hand that one? In half. It would fail in half as opposed to falling from the base.
Breaking at the midpoint.
Correct, correct, so, yeah.
Madam Chair, we didn't submit this with the application, but we saw in the staff report that it was a concern, so we had the engineer draft a letter about the structure of the tower. If it would be okay, I'd like to hand it out to the board.
Uh, yeah, that's fine. I, I believe we'll have to read it into the record then, right? Because it didn't get, yeah. So feel free to just read it aloud if you'd like.
It's full of acronyms and various things, but I will do my best.
How long is that? Is it, how many pages is that?
It's, it's like four or five paragraphs.
I guess I would, ultimately, I think the town engineer's probably gonna wanna review that as well. So as opposed to reading into the record, I'd, I'd offer it be submitted, because I can't imagine any of this, this whole thing getting resolved in one meeting. So there's gonna be an additional time for him to review.
I concur with that. It's kind of highly technical, any time to think about it.
Correct. So I would, I would rather it be submitted to us and then give the engineer an opportunity to offer his opinion on.
In very brief summary. Again, letter by Valmont, stamped by New Hampshire PE. The theoretical failure point is at the structure midpoint or above by purposely over-designing the structural components below this point. The predicted mode of wind-induced failure would be the local buckling of the shaft at or above the midpoint, with the upper sections folding over onto the intact lower sections. So it would fold up on itself and likely land inside the actual fence compound, but.
We had a few other, before we get to Glenn's comments, a few other comments submitted. So this is from the Board of Selectmen. It looks like a question, what legal documents are needed since it's the 175-foot setback radius encroaches onto two adjacent lots?
Same, that, that had to do with the, the fall zone issues.
This is from the Fire Chief. Letter dated, or comment dated January 11th, 2024. I would request an NOX box for emergency entry into the property. Also, I would request in writing, space available to emergency services on the tower itself for future use or expansion of our current emergency communications. There's a bill before the House of Representatives and the State House for this to be mandated for all future communication towers, which has not gone for a vote, the last I knew. Therefore, I would request to have, to have it on this tower. Other than that, as long as everything else meets any applicable NFPA codes, I don't see any reason this would not work, according to the plans presented.
And to that, your application does include permission to, to put emergency services transmitters on this tower.
We always do.
Yeah.
The NOX box is fine, but typically NOX boxes are used to house a key, correct? A key to open a building. We're not proposing a building here. I'm happy to talk with them about that. We're happy to put one there, but in this instance, we typically just share with them the combination to our locks, and that suffices, so that they have ready access if they need to.
Yeah, the other properties around here that use gates to block access by wheel vehicles on, we do have NOX boxes on those gates that get to the key to open the gate. So I think that's what he's thinking of, because otherwise, they start getting, having to carry in all their vehicles, the, either the combination or the key.
Sure, that's fine.
For each of these properties, and they start getting, to be quite unringed.
Uh, there's also a comment from the Department of Public Works. So Phil Coombs, in reference to another hearing, also mentioned that they would want to have right-of-way access for the cell tower proposal as well, so. It's like two, two requests for right-of-way access. And then we did get a number of comments from the town engineer, Dennis Quintal. In a letter dated January 12th, 2024, Dennis writes, "At your request, I've conducted an engineering review of the above-referenced application. I base this review on the following document sheet received January 4th, 2024. Eight-sheet plan set, tax map R1, Lot 1. Land owned by David Kimball. Applicant Verizon Wireless by Dewberry Engineers, Boston, Massachusetts, dated 10/20/23." And then there were multiple exhibits for site plan and conditional use permit. It reads, "I offer the following comments. One, Article 904.5G7, the person who flagged the edge of wetland must stamp and sign the plan. Two, 904.5G12, provide a planning board signature block on the plan set. Three, the lot is located at the southwest corner of Kingston, and a portion of the lot is in Plastow, and it also abuts the town of Hampstead. A plan says that there is a 53-plus-or-minus acre-based, acres based on a survey. Article 904.5G6, 5G36, provide surveyed property line information. The plan should note what sheets will be recorded and the remaining sheets on file with the town. The person who surveyed the property will need to stamp the plan to have it recorded. Number four, there is an existing access driveway onto the lot from Route 121A in Hampstead. The first 135 feet of the access is paved. The gravel driveway extends to an existing cleared area that appears to be used to stockpile materials. Perhaps the plan should identify the type of materials that are and will be stored on the lot. The access driveway crosses a wetland and has a 15-inch concrete pipe to convey surface runoff from one side of the driveway to the other. The wetland dredge and fill permit must be noted on the plan or provide verification that the wetland fill was done before state regulations were created. Six, the leased area for the tower will be surrounded by sediment-controlled silt fence. The proposed area will be gravel and crushed stone, little if any impervious surfaces. Therefore, nor stormwater mitigation is required. Seven, the tower setback radius of 175 feet extends over the property line. The location of the 140-foot monopole tower will have a drop zone over the lot line. I wonder if an easement is required or written permission is required from the abutter. Article 904.5G9, also, why couldn't the tower be located farther from the property line so that there would be no impact to the abutter? Glenn, do you want to go through your comments?
Alright. I have, as my comments, the following. The applicant has submitted information detailing the need for this tower based upon RF engineering information. The planning board has the opportunity to have this information verified by a third-party independent review. And so I, I asked the board if they want to do that. We've, we've dealt with the second one about notification according to RSA. So I don't need to read. I'm sorry. 25% of the tower height that the monopole is designed to fall vertically and not horizontally. And we've, we have some information for Dennis to review about that issue. Does the board want to see a balloon test to illustrate the visual, the visual extent of the proposed tower? The site is fairly remote. Does the board want to, or does the board want additional screening of the site beyond the forested nature of its present location? Number six, is a site walk warranted? Number seven, there is a list of factors to be considered in granting a conditional use permit found at Section 410.7B3 in our, in our ordinance. The board should review these as they consider the CUP. From my perspective, the nearness of residential structures in Hampstead is a concern. The applicant has agreed to both co-location for other providers and public safety antenna location for fire and police. These should be conditions of any approval. Bonding for removal and/or abandonment of this tower can also be considered by the planning board. For recording purposes, the plan will require the stamp of a licensed land surveyor. The zoning table should indicate that the property also falls within the Wetlands Conservation District. Any plans for recording need to have an endorsement block for the planning board's signature. The site plan needs to indicate pre- and post-impervious coverage totals, and an electronic version of the final plan set must be provided.
Any response to any of the comments from Glenn, or I guess particularly Dennis's letter? Did you get copies of both of those in advance?
We did, thank you.
Okay. Any more questions or comments from the board before we move to public comment?
I would just like to say that I, I think a balloon test would be beneficial to see. I think that's a very good tool to use to, you know, to get a realistic, and I, just comments I do wanna offer, and I, I think some others have brought it up, is really just that with such a large lot, the location of it, so property lines. I mean, I understand the property owner wants to cram as much as they can into one small section, because it appears as though there's a giant stump collection pile already, and now they wanna co-locate this right to the property line to free up the rest of the property. But I have some real concerns about that. If, if they wanna use the property for this project, they should be wanting to locate, not be so close. I, I think that's stuff that we'll definitely be looking at moving forward.
Applicant doesn't mind returning to.
I just.
Oh, sorry.
How close is the closest house to the tower, feet-wise?
I mean, I'm gonna take a look here real quick. I think it's more than 100 feet.
Yeah, the, the tower itself is, the, the, sorry, the compound that encloses the tower is 50 feet from the property line. So it's probably a couple hundred feet to a house, but it's the property line where you have, you measure the impact from, the visual impact, so. Because you can't deny people future use of their whole property just because you have something that's gonna fall on their land. Wind blows and it doesn't buckle the ways.
I'm not, I'm not so concerned about the fall, I'm just wondering.
Well, visual impact, yeah, that's.
Yeah, on visual, I'm not really concerned, I'm just, how many feet?
50 feet to the structure.
250 feet from the house?
It's, I think it's over, I think it's over 5, I think it's over 500 feet.
Yeah, I tried to scale it because it was close to 100.
I got 515 with my pen cap, roughly. If you, if you, if you look at sheet Z2, just for easy numbers, the circle that our engineer provided, the radius of which is 175 feet, from 20, Lot 55, is a little over 500 feet, just using that, you know, scaling that off the plan.
Alright. And the Kimball lot, if it, if it is moved back, as mentioned, I think it'd be over 1,500 feet at that point? I mean, I'm just, again, I'm, I'm also concerned.
What was the question, I'm sorry?
The, the, the size of the Kimball lot, which you, you have the easement on.
Yep.
Just, I mean, to me, it just seems a little close to a house when you could, if you're gonna put it there, and you wanna cover that zone, here would be a little more than 1,500 feet in the back end. From here, this would concern me. You're there, I don't think I'd be that concerned. Follow where I'm going with that? 500 feet's kind of close.
Well, it, it, it depends, it depends on perspective, right? I mean, like I said, if we look, if you go back and look at the existing sites in this area, for example, the site in Atkinson, right here, that lot is 175 feet by 175 feet, and the monopole's in the center of it. And if that were to fall, and it's been up since.
I, 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 I'm not concerned about a fall. How close is the closest house to that site? In that, 200 feet?
Yep.
Okay.
To your point, one of the things that we do after the first meeting is schedule a balloon float. And so we generally like to do that after the first meeting, because it gives us a chance to hear from you. Are there any areas of particular concern from which we can take photos? As a rule of thumb, we drive all roads, all public roads, within one mile of the site, and take photos from where the balloon is visible. And then with that, our artists will then use Adobe Photoshop to render the tower in place to scale of the balloon, so you have before and after. And then again, if there were any other areas in town that you thought, or beyond that one-mile radius that you thought were of concern, we'll take a photo from that location, whether it's visible or not.
Again, just a, visual is, is not my concern. My concern is, what's emitted, what's the new technology? How many antennas are you gonna have up there? And, I mean, I, I've seen recommendations anywhere from, you don't wanna do that within 1,500 feet of a, of a house.
Sure.
And if I'm in a butter, I, again, that kind of stuff would concern me. And I think we're gonna hear a little bit about that. You know, 500 feet, okay. 15 would make me feel better if I was living next to it.
Sure. So I guess what I would say is this, if it's any consolation, and Keith, you can describe, you discussed the MP report after, but as with all the sites, Verizon bills, as with any federal licensee, be it Verizon or any of the carriers, be it the Public Safety Department in town, we have to meet a certain, there's a certain criteria we have to meet that's set by a third party called National Council of Radiation Protection. So the FCC sets, adopts that and sets that as their standard for emissions. So if it's any consolation, what I would say is, all of our sites are designed to meet or exceed that threshold. Threshold's 100%, we routinely land in the 10% to 15% to 20% range at full, at maximum capacity. Keith, do you wanna talk about your MP report? We, we actually submitted the report.
It's in here. I don't, I don't think there's a significant concern, I'm judging from the report that you submitted, about the emissions dangers. I think most of the people who have concerns, it's the visual impact, because obviously people have their cell phones next to their head half the day, it's.
I, I'd probably say there's probably concerns about transmission as well. I mean, I, I know the federal government always takes care of us. And everything, and every. When we can attack fire foam contaminated wells in our community that was pushed down by the feds. So I wouldn't wanna speak to say that there's not.
Yeah, I was, I was looking at, compared to microwave and other, other towers.
Just because you mention it, Chris. From my point, we've about 18 of these in the 35 years that I've been doing this. The, the emission standards are not an issue. And there are, when I last looked at documentation, 480,000 cell towers in the United States. If there was an issue health-wise, we would've heard about it. You, you couldn't, you couldn't convince all of the doctors around those 480,000 towers to say, yeah, there's no, there isn't a health issue here, if there was a health issue there. That being said, one has the right to expect from their home certain things. And one of them is not necessarily seen in industrial use near their home. I did take a drive down Ellison Road, and I was really surprised how close I thought it was, looking at the maps. And, and that's why I was really happy to hear Chris buy. And that's why I was really happy to hear Chris buy into my balloon test, because every time I've seen one of those, it has really helped me understand what the impact is. So I, I just, I'm happy to hear that everybody seems to think that's a good idea.
Yeah, and I'm glad you've already planned it. Do you have some kind of air stat or balloon that you use for this? And it goes up to the, basically, the balloon goes up to the height of the tower, and it's big enough so that it would be visible?
Correct, correct, yes. So what we... The process is this, so we would schedule with you folks a time on a Saturday morning. Typically, we float them from 8:00 AM to 11, maybe 12:00 PM. At that point, wind usually, the wind usually takes them down, but the balloon itself, again, is floated. It's a five-foot, five-to-six-foot diameter red weather balloon, helium-filled. We raise it to the, the string itself is measured to the height of the tower. So, the balloon will sit, the red weather balloon that you see will be higher than the top of the tower. And again, because we know it's about five or six feet in diameter, then the artist who then takes those photos and does the, does the actual rendering of the tower, has some scale, and we can do the best we can with scaling. We know the height, the antennas themselves on the tower, and everything is superimposed, so we have before and after. We'll provide you with a map of all the roads we drove, and the vantage points from which each photo was taken. Planning boards welcome to walk the site that day. We'll occasionally pair a planning board meeting/sight walk with, you know, with the balloon float. I just did one Saturday in Lebanon, Maine with that board. All very routine, and I, again, I tip, I typically offer it after the first meeting, so everyone's on notice, so...
Yeah, I, for one, think that a combined site walk/float is, is an excellent idea, and, and perhaps the folks who live on abutting properties would be willing to have us take a look from, from there. I know that's, would have to be arranged separately, but as far as permissions, but at least we could view it from Ellison Avenue, and that would, that would give us a very good idea, because on these, these plats or the photos, it's hard to tell the topography. And I know that I looked at the topography, and I was kind of wondering why it wasn't over on, towards the Plastow Town Forest side of this, this plot, because it seemed to be a slightly higher elevation there. You'd get the same MSL for a little less AGL on that tower height. So, you know, it just, it seemed like there was a better location for the tower, and then I saw Dennis' comments, and he mentioned that too. And I, I'm, you know, either way, if you put it over there and still get by it on his, his, his clearing there, and so it's, I can't imagine he would object to much, but you know, that may, that may be a, you know, a breakpoint on this.
Would it be possible to get a comparison between your new tower and the old, the other Atkinson Tower as to output, megahertz, et cetera? I mean, the numbers, you start here at 7, then we go up to 2,100, and even the gigahertz, 3.7 up to 28. It just, if we put it in a better perspective of what you're building, because there's old generation, new generation. Cell towers have been around for, as you mentioned, for a very long time, there are a lot of different places. But I, I'm pretty sure the outputs between them are all different, so maybe just like, when we do sight watch, just have a comparison between the old tower that you have in Atkinson...
We can explain it, we can explain it now. So all of these sites here are running 4G and 5G technology.
Four and five?
They all are, and that's, that's proposed for here. So, when we build a site, it's not case closed. In fact, every two to three years, I mean, you, you see the commercials, you hear the advancements in technology, 2G, 3G, 4G, PCS this, E video that. We are constantly, we're not just building new sites, we're also upgrading the existing sites. It's a, it's a, we're swapping antennas with new antennas, so that the technology on those sites maintains course and speed with the rest of the industry. So, what we propose for this site here, and Keith can get in, oh, I'd like you to get into that in a second here, is no different than what we're already operating at these, at these other sites here. Keith?
Yeah, the, the equipment throughout the network is, is uniform, it needs to be interoperable, so the, so the sites do work together as a network. So, the equipment on all these sites is generally identical to what's proposed at the proposed site. The panel antennas are, they all operate at the same frequency bands that Verizon's licensed at, so the antennas, the models may be slightly different, but in general, they're all sectorized panel antennas, similar outputs, the radios are similar in nature. So the, the exposure, or the emissions from each site, all things being equal, would, would be relatively the same.
Excellent, thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd, I'd really like to hear from the public, just...
Yep.
...questions that they may want to ask, and could I, would you mind if I just offered some guidance, how's this thing to go?
No, I think that'd be super helpful, thank you.
So, folks, we're gonna come, microphones to speak, you're gonna have to state your name and your address. This is emotional and heated stuff. This is your home, this is your family's, I understand. You can, and questions to the applicant and the audience, you need to be addressing the board. The board are the ones that have the power and ability to follow up an inquisitory... But I understand, this, this should, this should matter to you.
Can I briefly share a picture or slide to the people we're actually talking about?
If you, if you want to come up during public comment, and you recognize...
So, why don't you come on up, you can grab the microphone, state your name and address, as Chris said, and then share your questions, comments, or concerns.
Can you hear me okay? My name's Andy Galloway, I live at 6 Meadowwood Road, Kingston, but I have a piece of property in Plastow, and I already submitted a plan for a cell tower. And these gentlemen here, I work with Vertex Towers, and I have a three-year lease agreement with them, and there's no need to put any of these people through all of this. Plain example, I'm putting in a 3,000-foot-long driveway for myself. I own a little over 30 acres, I'm 100 feet of elevation higher than you guys, and the coverage that we have is more than double than what they're offering. It's more than 2,000 feet away from any one of these abutters, and they wouldn't be able to see it. So I have a set of plans here, that's already been submitted to the town of Plastow. If you guys would like a copy, I'll give each one of you a copy, that's not a problem. So, that's where I'm at. So, that's pretty much where I'm at right now. So, when these, these guys say that there's no other alternative sites, Vertex Towers already reached out to them and told them about my site, and they just fluffed it off. And this has been going on for three years. So, you're not being truthful, that's all.
Any questions from the board? Oh, do you mind repeating your name, please?
Andy Galloway.
Thank you.
Want me to leave a copy for you guys?
Please.
I do have a question on the, you said this going for three years?
Yes.
And yet, there's a 150-day approval period...
By lease agreement with Vertex Towers, it's been going on for three years. This plan's already been submitted with the town of Plastow, okay? It's been, yes.
Right, my point, point being that for a new tower, from the date of receipt, for us, November 29th, we have until April 27th to approve or deny, so that under federal...
But this is in Plastow, this is...
I know, it's, it's not our regulation, it's a federal regulation that limits our ability to, to do that, to delay it. So, if you had this proposal on for three years, the application can't have been on for more than 150 days if it hasn't been approved.
So, but if you look at their, their tower, their tower is at 243, 245, I'm at 345, 355, somewhere in there. And I have another whole packet of coverage that dwarfs theirs. And then on top of that, these neighbors here would not see this tower, that's all. It's more than, over 2,000 feet away.
And the tower's already, so that's not an approved plan set?
No, this is in the process of getting approved right now.
Okay.
So there is an alternative site right now, and they're saying it's not, there is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who'd like to go next? Come on up. Wait, hold on, you gotta, gotta get the microphone, state your name. Name an address, please.
Matthew Paul. Matthew Paul, 80 Ellison Ave., East Hampstead, New Hampshire. So, my first question is, why do we keep referring to Hunt Road, where Hunt Road is like a considerable distance away?
I can answer that very quickly. In our GIS system of identifying properties by location, all, all these properties south of Hunt Road are listed as off Hunt Road, because there is no road going in there.
If it was even near Hunt Road, we wouldn't be sitting in this room right now.
I understand that, but in the Kingston system of identifying property locations, they are, are all listed as off Hunt Road. They're, because the property's not on a road in Kingston, but it's located in Kingston, that's the closest they can do. There's no road number, because there's no driveway going to any road in Kingston. Obviously, this driveway going in here comes from East Hampstead, and very, and very close to Plastow line, but it is coming from East Hampstead, so there's, the property probably has the dress as East Hampstead, where the driveway is, but that's why it's listed as off Hunt Road.
So, to give, that's my house at 80 Ellison Ave. So, those pine trees are 80 feet tall. You tapped it again, so hang on. All right. So, this is the road right here. What you're gonna be looking at is a tower right there. What we, the people in that neighborhood, don't understand is, why, if a man has 40-plus acres of land, are we even talking about being near somebody's property? That's what we don't understand, you know? It sounds like a convenient situation for Mr. David Kimball. You know, let him use two acres of his land 40, 40 acres out. I mean, let me share this picture over here so that they can see what we're looking at. I mean, there's, there's no reason to even consider this. It's literally in my freaking backyard. That's my house at 80 Ellison Ave. You know, it's, it's beautiful. The neighbors are looking, they took the picture for me, and there's gonna be a tower here. If there's 40-plus acres, we shouldn't even see that tower. It shouldn't even be anywhere near our property. Would, would, do you like to see the picture, or? Well, I mean, it's...
I've, you can see the picture, but I'll take a look.
The, 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 the deal is this, is why are we even near these houses, you know? Would you want to be grilling on your back deck with your grandchild out there? I mean, no, no, I mean, no. I don't, we don't, they don't. So I don't know what Mr. Kimball is thinking. But anyway, if any of that made sense...
Thank you.
My name is Rick, my name is Rick Cagle, and I'm at 86 Ellison Avenue. I'm the other abutter listed there with the fall zone radius drawn onto the back of my property. Mr. Paul's neighbor, and, and he and I share similar concerns, I think, in terms of the location of the, the proposed tower. I didn't do a measurement, so I'm not sure... It was on, sorry about that. I'm gonna start over. My name is Rick Cagle, and I'm the owner at 86 Ellison Avenue. I just wanted to mention a couple of things, and I think we've touched on those a lot tonight. First of all, it's a fascinating process, first time I've had a chance to see a, a planning board meeting like this. So, thank you very much for, for putting all this together and taking the time to hear us out. I understand federal communications, I, I work for the federal government, no offense, or I should, non-taken, I should say. I work, I work with the NTIA and the FCC, and I understand a lot about, I'm a physicist by training and a computer engineer by, by profession. So I, I, I understand a lot about the cell tower process, I'm also pretty well-versed in the TCA and other relevant articles. I understand we have to have cellphone towers, I get that. When I heard that there was gonna be a cellphone tower, I thought, oh, you know, that's gonna be a little inconvenient, I guess, but that maybe the cellphone signal will go up. But then, I saw the proposed plan, with the tower put so close to the line, I thought, well, that's, that's, I don't like that. But, the question I had, or the comment I had, is that I know the Hampstead ordinances would say that, that you couldn't do that, right? The Kingston ordinances say it has to be so far away from a dwelling, a residence. We don't have dwellings, we don't have residences back there, I get that. But it does cross the line, and if we're concerned about notifying towns and having that notification go out to other towns, it doesn't feel cricket to have that rule be taken advantage of by having the, the owner with an enormous amount of land, as we pointed out, unwilling to move it, what is that, 88 feet away? Even that much would get it off the line and make it, I, I don't know that I even would have come to this meeting necessarily. But I do, I do have concerns, and that is that from this point forward, if this were to be built, I now have an encumbrance on my property. That fall zone being there, I, my kids used to play back there, there's a dilapidated treehouse back there, which maybe it's best if they don't play in, but that aside, they have played back there, they've run back there, they've, they've gone back there poking around. They know not to cross over and to stay on our property. But I'm gonna have to explain, if I sell the house, that that part of the property you're buying, but you don't really control anymore, that's gonna be outside, it, it, that fall zone is now gonna be something you have to contend with, and I have to explain. I'm not thrilled about that. And it seems that with so much land, I understand that, that there will be some rent paid or some sort of a, a regular agreement based on the location of the tower to the owner of the property, but it looks like he's doing that by borrowing some of Mr. Paul's and my properties, and I'm not, I, I just find that a little bit distasteful. So, I think that's all that I really wanted to say, and I appreciate the chance to come and, and talk with you tonight. And I'm putting the microphone down.
Thank you very gingerly, thank you.
That's all, that's all. Hi, my name is Dan Diskin, I live at 91 Ellison Avenue, and I look across at where the cell tower would be. When we built this house 20 years ago, my wife and I, one of the things that we dealt with, with the builder was, did we want to face 121A and see the traffic that's building up, or did I want to face in towards the subdivision? And I told him, if you can't turn the house so I face it so I see the Paul's house and the houses across the street, that I wouldn't buy that property from him. So he designed my lot so that I looked in that direction. The other thing I would say is, even though it, it falls within the town of Hampstead when you say that it's off of Hunt Road, the access to this is really right off of their backyards and right across from my house. So all the power, all the construction, all the access will come that way. So even though the plans say Hunt Road, it really is just on that tiny, the experts have kind of dropped us in. So, the reason why there are no cell towers in that area is because the plan... In Zone A in Hampstead, no cell towers are allowed, but in the...
Hi, my name is Stephanie Boulay. I live at 70 Ellison Avenue, so this cell tower would also be in my backyard. I moved to New Hampshire, Hampstead, in 2020 because of the beautiful views. I moved from Massachusetts to get away from all of that. This is why I picked this house. I love the view, I love everything about this section of New Hampshire, and I truly love New Hampshire. I have several concerns, a lot of them are touched on. I think my biggest one is safety. I have small children. So, I know you are comfortable with the EMF radiation, but I am not comfortable with it. There's lots of studies that it's a probable carcinogen. There's no evidence base, but, you know, we also used to think that you could drink while you were pregnant and smoking was okay for you. I don't think there's enough evidence that it is 100% safe, and I have small children, and there has been many studies that it could possibly affect fertility, fetuses, newborn children. So, I have a lot of concerns about that. And also, my children do play in that backyard. They go in the woods. They are two boys, I have two young boys, they are adventurous. I don't wanna have to worry about this. That's my main concern. Of course, the visual effect, but my main concern is the safety of my family. Okay, that's what I'm concerned about, and I do not feel comfortable with this new proposition. So, I have a really hard time accepting that there's no other place, like everybody else has said, that there could be a cellphone tower built. So, I mean, also, I mean, our property values. I would not buy that house again if that tower was there. I would not buy it, 100% would not buy it. So, what do I have to do when I go to sell it? Whenever, is take a 20% decrease in my value? Is somebody gonna compensate me for that? That's not fair to our community, that's not fair to us as residents. I know we don't pay property taxes to you guys, but we pay a lot of property taxes, and I deserve that view.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? All right, seeing none, we will close public comments at 8:18. So, how would the board like... Actually, first, before we do that, does the applicant wanna respond to any of the public comments? So, feel free to come back up. And again, just as we instructed the public, feel free to direct feedback to the board, and obviously, folks can hear it.
Thanks again. There's been some discussion about the TCA, the Telecommunications Act of 1996. We provide with C in our application, applicable legal standards. It gives some information on that, because there is federal law overlay of your ability to adjudicate this application. The TCA establishes national standards that apply to zoning applications for wireless facilities and place limitations on local zoning authority. These standards preempt or override inconsistent state and local laws, so they must be considered by zoning boards or commissions in making decisions on applications for wireless facilities. Let's jump to the punchline. Although the TCA does not preempt all local zoning laws, it expressly preempts rules and laws attempting to regulate the "placement, construction, and modification of personal wireless service" facilities that "effectively prohibit the provision of personal wireless service." Effectively prohibit. So, that's all we're here today, is to show you that there's a gap, and that this is a lot that's available to Verizon, where the lender will allow us to go, that'll fix or solve the gap. And that's the goal of tonight, is to try and show you the efforts that we've gone through to try and do that, okay? And the last thing I wanna mention is, in connection with the health impacts... To be clear, health effects cannot be considered by any ZBA or planning board across the country, because that is effectively... Excuse me, it's preempted by the Telecommunications Act of 1996. Section 704A of the 1996 Act expressly preempts state and local government regulation of the placement, construction, and modification of personal wireless service facilities on the basis of the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions to the extent that such facilities comply with the FCC's regulations concerning such emissions. So, that's why we incorporated in our application the exhibit from the emissions engineer, saying that we're within FCC regulations. So, from our perspective, it's not a discussion to be had.
Just a follow-up. We did prepare the calculated radio frequencies emissions reports due to November 6th. In summary, that concludes that the cumulative effect from Verizon's installation would be 13.88%, the max allowable limit being 100%. So, it's substantially below that. I'd also like to point out that these calculations incorporate a number of worst-case scenarios, such as full ground reflection of the RF wave, which creates... Which effectively quadruples the power density. Oftentimes, you know, myself personally and our company, we do measurements of these facilities once they are on air. The calculations are always substantially higher because of those conservative assumptions that are built into the calculations.
There were a couple other comments. I'll try to address, I think, the last two here that I had in my notes. The first gentleman got up and spoke about a potential VERTEX project over in Plastow. There's a number of tower companies and carriers out there that every rights to lease property and develop sites, just as Verizon does. We've leased this property from Mr. Kimball. It will serve the needs of this goal, this objective that we have, to provide coverage. We don't need to be on the highest hill. In fact, nowadays, you see less and less of that. It's a boomer-style mentality, top of Gunstock Mountain, Mount Aggie in York. These are just some sample ideas of build a tower at the highest height of land and provide as much coverage as you can. That was certainly a strategy, again, the boomer-style mentality 20, 25 years ago. That's not the case anymore. We don't need to be at the height of land. If we needed more height, we actually would've proposed more than 140-foot tower. Again, this is the shortest tower in the existing coverage area here. So, again, every company has the right to lease and propose, just as Verizon does here. And go back to the setback fall zone conundrum that we have here. So, in the ordinance, there's no mention of the term "fall zone." And when we use that term "fall zone," there's the fear of it... We're building it to fall. We don't build them to fall. Just as any other type of structure is designed and built, this design will be stamped by a professional New Hampshire engineer. The location itself, the tower foundation itself, will be designed for that location. We'll do a soil sample, a geotechnical analysis. We'll come up with a soil survey, and then based on wind and ice and wind and ice loading speeds for this area, that tower will be designed for that spot. Somewhere along the way, we lost faith in our engineers. We drive over bridges every day, and that bridge was stamped by an engineer. There's towers in your... that have been here for 25 years. They weren't built to fall. So, I'm just trying to provide some perspective and hopefully some comfort, that this isn't our first rodeo. So, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So, I do appreciate counsel bringing up. I am aware of the laws that the board can't take into consideration the health effects due to the Telecommunication Safety Act, but I knew members of the public would bring it up, and they do have a right to express that concern. I know that we can't consider it, and I just wanna let members of the public abutters, everyone know, me individually, I have always been a staunch defender of property rights. And, but, that's a double-edged sword. I'm also a defender of property rights for you as the abutters. I'm a defender of property rights for the individual applicant. And just as they did say, we can't necessarily force an applicant to pursue another site location that they're not interested in. I know there may be another site available, but that's not approved yet. It's not constructed, it's not built, it's not available. I don't know if, you know, we're in the realm where we could require a third-party review of the need and the necessary, because we don't have... There isn't another approved or existing site. Mr. Kimball has the right to... Applicants and builders, they have the right to pursue it, but we also wanna make sure... There are, at the end of the day, there may be some things that board members don't necessarily like, but we are confined by the state laws and the RSA's that guide planning and zoning. So, there are certain things that we may be able to steer throughout this process, through our preferences and guidance, but there are some things that you may see the board make decisions on, and it's not because we necessarily... This is something we don't empathize and sympathize with your concerns, but we have a legal obligation to... In the best interest of the town and the ordinances that we have adopted and accepted. So, I want you to understand that, even on stuff that we can't... We'll think it is important for us to hear that and know it's a concern as we weigh in on the stuff that we do have purview over. So, I just want everyone to know, there is a level of respect that we wanna maintain for all property owners, everyone that's involved, whether it's the applicant property and the adjacent properties. But, it is important for people to be able to voice the concerns that they do have. So, I just wanna make that known. And I also understand, I also understand the insatiable desire for increased communications. We, as a society, you know, are demanding more and more. I mean, people can't seem to survive without a Wi-Fi signal if they even go camping for some amount of time. During my day job, I oversee an entity that maintains a regional communication center. We provide dispatching services for 24 police departments and 19 fire and EMS departments, including the town of Kingston and Hampstead. And, so, I understand these gaps and needs, but I understand the balance that we have to try and maintain with the property owners and those that are impacted by this.
Everybody in the public speak tonight, and the applicant. I think one of our major hole appears is, obviously, the visual aspects of this tower. So, I think maybe our... And a balloon test, because we can sit and go back and forth all night long, but until we see that test and see what this is gonna look like, I don't think we have enough information that we could actually go forward and think anymore about... And it's the visual aspect of it. I haven't walked that property, I don't know why you can't move it 75 feet to the right. I have no idea. But I think we should probably look at that sidewalk and a balloon test.
So, public comment's been closed, but I did just see seven or eight hands go up. I will open it back up for public comment, so I'll ask that the... If the applicant could step back again, and we'll have... You're gonna have to come up, use the mic, state your name and address.
I just have a... Just a couple comments before you go. That picture is, I don't know, just... When you go out to that site, stand in front of that guy's house. Again, I can't make a decision based on that, but you should do that, okay? The other part is, I mean, State of New Hampshire Commission on 5G Health Environment, which issued a landmark final report, and again, I can't make a decision based on this, but a landmark final report in 2020 recommending a 1,640-foot setback on cell towers. Okay? Again, just... You gotta consider those things, and if you have the room, I would just encourage you maybe to go down that road, okay? And again, I can't make a decision on that, but...
I appreciate it.
500, 1,640, I mean, again, it's your decision, but I...
If there's any consolation, so, we know... We know that municipalities don't have the ability to base a decision based on health effects, right? But nonetheless, we provide these emissions reports to show you that this site will more than comply. In addition, in addition, if it's helpful to know, Dartmouth Medical Hitchcock Center, one of the premier medical facilities in New England, solicited us for better coverage. The doctors, the personnel at the hospital at one time, several years back, said, "Coverage here is lacking, we need better coverage." So, Verizon responded. We have not only an indoor DAS system, distributed antenna system, similar to Wi-Fi, but we also have an outdoor rooftop site at that hospital. Elliott Medical Center. Stage 4 NICU. They have Verizon, they have AT&amp;T, all at the facility. If you're concerned, the Snoo Arena has a DAS facility. Hang on, but it's... They are here. Fenway, Fleet, the Mall of New Hampshire, they're everywhere. They're everywhere.
Not one of those examples makes me feel better about a commission that wants 1,640 feet back than... I mean, I get it, Dartmouth Hitchcock, but that does not make me feel better. That wouldn't even make me feel better for a second. Fenway, nope, okay? Elliott, nope, not feeling better, okay? This new technology coming out, and again, it matters not to me, I guess. But this new nectology coming out, I would be concerned, okay? I mean, I've followed cell phones coming up, I've saw it, the war and war effects, in my opinion. And in... Now, today, how much power are you gonna run into that, compared to how much power you used to run into it 10 years ago? I mean, how much power generate, did you need to generate 10 years ago, compared to now? And there's a significant difference of what you've got going in there. And again, I just... It's here when it could be there. Just a thought.
So, I'm familiar with the bill and legislation you've cited. It will never be passed into law, because it squarely is preempted by federal law. So, we can't consider it as part of these proceedings. The board can't consider it, no zoning board, no planning board can consider. It's preempted by federal law. Those are the rules of the show, unfortunately. That's the rules.
I'm just asking you to consider it.
Everyone has different perspectives. I go around the state doing these presentations, right? I can cite surveys that 83% of millennials cite that cell coverage is the most important thing when they buy a house, right? More important than school systems, right? People have different opinions on things, and there has to be... There has to be some rules that set forth, like, these are your parameters, what you can be looking into, what you can't be looking into, because everyone has varied decision-making, especially in New Hampshire, quite honestly. So, that's what the federal law is designed to do, is say, "These are the things that you can consider when adjudicating these sorts of applications."
Just, please, please.
So, I'll open back up for public comment in a minute.
To your point there, okay? And that was the third point that I wasn't gonna get into. I have no problem with coverage in that area. I go through there all the time. I have zero problem with coverage in that area.
To go away from the RFI issue, go back to the visual, which is, I think, the key issue that we can work with, because that is one of the areas that town regulations cover, and we do have some say. Apartment site location, you know, location on the state. Because that triangle of land that sticks down, the bulk of the land is farther up towards the Kingston Town Forest to the north, as it widens up, and is tree-covered. And to go less than 100 yards further up to the northeast, gets you away from property lines, it gets you more into the woods. There's another alternative, which I used to see down in Pennsylvania in the 90s, which is camouflage the tower to look like a pine tree. And, obviously, you're very familiar with that, because that's a fairly common request. And I think that the boards are allowed to put... We can't ask for anything that would essentially prohibit you from putting up a cell tower, but we can ask for reasonable consideration. you from putting up a cell tower, but we can ask for reasonable consideration of, uh, you know, if we go down there and this tower is visible from abutters properties, uh, and, and from neighborhoods, accommodate a reasonable request to, to make it look like a pine tree or make it look like the surrounding forest. And, uh, I, I think that would go a long way to, um, alleviating some, some of the issues, but I think you have two issues to work with primarily, in terms of the visual, and we'll probably find out more as Peter said, we'll schedule this site visit and balloon test, um, but as to how to, how to ma- mitigate the visual impact of the cell tower, and you have relocation and camouflaging as, as key tools to work with.
Sure. So now, if you wouldn't mind, uh, stepping back, we'll have anyone who would like to come up for public comment round two. Oh, sorry, Glenn, go ahead.
Can I just state one thing?
Of course.
I just wanted to clarify that in my, um, discussion with Chris earlier, I got a little bit carried away. There aren't 450,000 cell towers in the United States. There's 170,000 cell towers. There's 400 small cell nodes, whatever those are. And I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you for correcting that.
Those are mounted up on, um, telephones and things, they're really small.
Uh, so we'll need your name and address again, sorry.
Andy Galloway, 6 Meadowood Road, Kingston, New Hampshire. Under the Telecom Act of 1996, it's their due diligence to prove that there's no other alternative site, and it's also within the town's regulations as well, that as a formality, that you have to explore that option, um, as well. So there is an alternative site, and I just don't understand why you guys don't acknowledge that.
Can't direct it to them.
Oh, sorry, to the board. Oh, sorry. That's pretty much what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just respond to Andy on that?
From the board's perspective, Andy, they, when they applied and they gave us their inventory of alternative sites, yours was not before the Plastow Planning Board. Your application came in, their, my understanding, I got a phone call a week ago that told me about your application, and it just went to the planning board in Plastow. So there's no, um, there's no responsibility for them to have provided us information in November about your site. So, understanding that you feel that there's an alternative site from the timeframe work of this application wasn't the case. And I just don't want that to get confused, because this board has to be careful about what they consider as information. And having that discussion is questionable, and I, I just don't want it to get overly confused.
Conversely, presumably, your app, the people who are reviewing your application will need to know about this application, which is precedent.
They do, they do.
Right. I'm gonna send them a letter, but.
Yeah.
No, they're in contact.
Any further comment?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Rick Kegel, 86 Ellison Avenue, again. I'll be brief, I have two points of order or two points of inquiry. One, with the balloon test, is it possible that the abutters could be present for that? We would very, be very interested in that, thank you very much.
So it's a, it'll be functionally a, a public hearing as well, so anybody can attend?
Oh, thank you for the clarification. Second question is, understanding the maps that we saw with the existing towers and the amount of co-location that had already occurred, can one assume that this tower, when it's constructed, will be the, the, the erection of a tower with antenna, and there will be subsequent hearings if any further antennas are going to be mounted on there from other providers, co-located with the new one that's being proposed to be built?
I don't believe there's a legal provision to require public, and an already approved tower, as long as it falls under, uh, federal and state standards.
It, it depends. Actually, there, there are requirements, and I think these guys, I see the lawyer nodding and said, that there are requirements, it has to do with 30%, you know, um, there's actually been an increase in the, uh, in this radius, but, um, I, I, I think that's something we could address to, to the attorney, because he's got the answer, um, about that. But there, there are certain requirements, and anything beyond a certain amount, it has to be heard.
If you want to come up and, and respond to that, that'd be great. Thank you.
If there's an existing tower and another carrier wants to co-locate on it, there would be a site plan amendment required, because it would be new equipment on the pole and new, potentially another generator or other cabinets beneath, so it would require a site plan amendment.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, that means more, bigger, louder?
What's that? Glenn?
When, when this discussion is done, could I be?
Yes.
Sorry, just trying to make sure I clarify. So potential for more generators, so more noise, louder, potential for other, uh, emitters of radiation? Yes?
Glenn, go ahead.
Well, his response.
Right, and the pole's designed to accommodate up to four carriers per state law, and your statute requires co-location, we can't just build one tower with one carrier, it has to co-locate as many as possible.
When, if we were to grant an approval that had a requirement of co-location, and their site plan showed the location, the proposed locations of four additional sites, we would not require another site plan review for that. If they were, if they wanted to do six sites, and there were four approvable, four approved locations, then we would do an amendment to the site plan. But if their proposal, after we require co-location, shows that they have, within that 50-foot enclosure, the, the location for the four generators needed or whatever, then there would be no need for additional site plan.
So I guess to clarify to you, sir, that just means, depending on what the final approval, if it got to that, it would be the language in there. So if it was approved for up to so much co-location with available space for support equipment for that co-location, they wouldn't have to come back, but if it was going to increase beyond the amount of co-location that specifically approved on the site plan, uh, they would have to come back for, uh, site plan review or an amendment.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Stephanie Boulay at 70 Ellison Avenue.
I don't think it's on.
Just, I'm not sure if this is accurate, but is there an alarm that will sound? I've heard that there's an alarm that will sound if it loses power and something happens with a generator. It's a very, very loud alarm. I'm not sure if that's accurate. I just want to.
Is that something that the, I'm seeing heads shaking now?
Okay, I'm just asking this question.
Thank you.
I won't drop the mic this time. Dan Diskin, 91 Ellison Ave., East Hampstead, New Hampshire. So really, the decision is up to the board here. So I would ask you all to put yourselves, your homes on Ellison Ave. with this proposed tower. According to your town standards, these are the things you need to consider. Factors, this is, uh, Section 2 Decisions. Factors considered in granting decisions. B, proximity of tower to residential development or zones. And I don't think it falls within that. C, nature of use of adjacent and nearby properties, their residential homes. G, proposed ingress and egress to the site. You can't get on or off this site in Kingston. You have to go in through Hampstead. You have to go by our homes in order to get on that site. So these are the key factors that I think are important to this particular plan that you're looking at tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone else want to make comment? Sure, Adam?
Adam Faulkner, Ford Jericho Drive. I don't usually come out and do this. Um, I, the, the reason, oh good, I did turn it on, I was about to have to yell it myself. One thing I do just feel very important to address, because I live in that general area, the cell service is awful. So just to address that one comment that was made, um, with full respect, oh no, the cell service there is terrible. Um, I, I, I'm just curious, and I am asking because I'm, I'm at all of these meetings, I know what goes on, and I can address a comment made so long as I'm addressing the board, right? Okay. And I'm not picking on anything, this is just the one that immediately comes to mind. Well, we already have a used car lot right there, why do we need to have another one nearby? I don't understand why that enters into anything, the, the, I think we all know the one I'm talking about, right? So it's just, it, I don't, I don't know why that enters into anything one way or the other, having proximity of something else that does the same thing. It's like, oh, well, we have a pizza place right there, we can't have another pizza place for, for a certain number of area, I don't know. Uh, the other thing, I'm just, and again, this is not so much anything other than I'm, I'm, again, I come to these things, I try to say abreast of everything, I'm just perplexed. Like, I think of all the, the various applications, you know, oh, we, you know, we're a residential area, we don't want to see a storage area right next door, but that doesn't matter because storage areas are permitted. We don't want to have the, the big warehouse right next to our residential areas, but resident, but it's permitted, so it, I just don't understand why the aesthetic, I mean, I get why the aesthetic matters to, to, to the people, I just don't know why that's an issue. And I'm, I'm not even necessarily asking for clarification, I don't mean to be difficult, of course. Uh, I don't have as much of a dog in this fight as everybody else, other than I'd like to be able to use my phone more regularly. Uh, but I, I just, I've been listening to everything, and it's just, I don't get it. And I try to understand what's going on, that's all. Um, that's all I've got, thank you.
Thanks, Adam. Any further comment? All right, we will close public, oh, all right. Getting in under the wire.
Matthew Paul, 80 Ellison Ave. So in closing, the, uh, another large concern is realistically, um, 90-plus percent of people would not want to purchase your property, and in real time, you could lose anyways from 15 to 20% of the value on your property. That's all.
Thank you.
You see this?
So gentle, thank you.
Thank you so much, guys.
All right, so back, go ahead.
I, I think we're at a, a sidewalk and balloon test.
So was that?
Uh, well, I think we need to confer about, I think we need to have a discussion about potential dates for that.
Yeah, I think that's the next step. Right now, is, is the sidewalk balloon test date?
Correct.
Is that?
Yeah, so typically, uh, we'll plan for a Saturday, and then, uh, should it be too windy, uh, we would try to do it on Sunday, the same, same time, same time block, so, yep.
How much notice do you need? Well, how much publication notice do we need? This is the public meeting, it's seven days? Is that correct? The question is, how much, uh, how soon we give it is the question. And since it's a public meeting, we have to post it, and it may only be three, three days or something for a meeting.
I'm not aware of any of those contracts. You're in a public forum, and you can, you can do it to the seventh, you can do it to the, what, what?
The question is, is because it's a public meeting, we have to post it.
It may only be 24 hours. Robin?
We, we can, no, we can post it, the day, if we wanted to, we could say that we were doing it tomorrow legally. There's no, there's no requirement for new plans for the sidewalk, uh, or the balloon test.
Oh, yeah, no, no worries about plans, anything like that, it's just that, um, public meetings have some kind of, and it may be as little as 24 hours, 20, 24 hours?
24 hours.
Okay, so, we, we're not restricted by that, so.
That, that answers that question. Um, so, the reason why I'm asking is that the next weekend is the 10th and 11th, and can you, is that too soon for you to be able to schedule with equipment?
Yeah, this weekend would probably be too soon. Um, might, might give folks in the audience and others who weren't able to attend, also a little more time to adjust their schedules, maybe the weekend after.
17.
Yeah, aim for 17, is that the Saturday, 17?
17th is Saturday, yeah.
So, 17th, 8 to 11?
At what time, I'm sorry?
Uh, 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM?
8:00 AM to 11:00 AM on the 17th.
And our sidewalk would be?
Yeah, good question.
Eight o'clock.
Okay.
Because I'm not going to hang around from 8 to 11.
Yes, yeah, our sidewalk should, our, the, our official meeting in the sidewalk should be at the beginning of that.
Okay.
Yep, okay. And then, should the, should the wind take the balloon down, or the weather be bad? Um, we'll aim for Sunday, same time.
Okay, so, weather date of the 18th.
So, folks in the audience, you will not get a separate notification of that date. This is, I can, any, anything that happens from here on out will be a continuation of these hearings, so you will not get individual mailers or butter notices. It would be anything that's presented in these meetings, so if you have other neighbors and abutters that you know that want to participate in this, they're not going to get follow-on correspondence, so the information and the new dates that are put out at these meetings will be the official notice. Uh, it will get posted on the town's website.
And then, question for you folks, as I mentioned at the outset of the meeting, um, beyond that one mile radius of public roads that we drive regardless, are there any specific vantage points from where you might want us to look?
In front of abutters houses.
We'll drive, we'll drive all public roads within one mile, which includes Ellison, of course, um, but, but beyond that, that, that radius, is there?
None on.
I don't know off topic.
Just a quick question for you, you've been out to this, um, what about parking? Where should we, everybody meet down there, do you have a location that we can vehicles off the road and not cause a hazard up there?
Good question. So when you pull off 121, um, again, the first 100 feet or so of the driveway is paved, um, I'd probably say park there, because I don't know sure how much is cleared, and when it, the road itself is firm and in good shape, so, uh, I would welcome, actually, I typically do is walk the road with, with the board members, talk about it. One thing I failed to mention during the meeting, and I apologize for this, but, um, the utilities serving the site, the power and the fiber will all be underground from 121 back. There'll be no aerial, aerial poles. Um, and we're using the existing driveway off of Estate Route 121, um, as, about as least impacted as you possibly could get here. So park at the top of the road, and we can all meet, congregate, and then I can walk and just kind of escort you down to the site and go from there.
So then, for the, additionally for the board, I would recommend that we continue the, continue this hearing to the March 19th public hearing date, uh, due to the fact that this will, obviously, we're going to have a sidewalk, which is a public meeting for us, but if we continue the hearing to that date, and for some reason there's a weather emergency and we can't conduct it, it would cause a problem for the continuation of the hearing, and any input that we come up with during the balloon test and the sidewalk that we can convey to the applicant that may be needed for any revised plans or plan sets, that will give them an opportunity to prepare that with enough time to meet the requirements for the March 19th public hearing date.
And that'll be enough turnaround for the renderings?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, more time, the better to do the renderings, and then, of course, like you say, any other plan or visions you might want to make between 17th and the 19th, that's plenty of time, so, thank you, yep.
Okay, so I will make the motion at 6:30 or 6:45.
Is there a second? Motion by Chris Bashaw, second by Peter Coffin. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Next official here, March 19th, but at the sidewalk on, uh, what day did we pick? February 17th, that will be cons, that will be considered a, this planning board, so everyone is welcome and attended, is open to the publics when we do the sidewalk as well. well as the balloon, the balloon survey test. Yes.
Eight o'clock.
AM?
AM.
Not PM.
I'll be up at six, I got, I got three kids and two dogs.
Can we take a brief break? Is that, so reconvene in five minutes at nine o'clock? All right, we'll start back up again. So we're going to close out the evening with LER Realty Company, Robert Griffin, trustees at twenty-three Cheney Road, map R twenty-three, lot sixty-three. Robert Nancy Griffin, Camilla, oh, Parento, Emily Griffin, sixteen Ledge Road, map R three, lot thirty, James McDonough and Terry Petzold, five Ledge Road, map twenty-three, lot fifty-nine, this application is a proposal for a lot line adjustment between map R twenty-three, lot sixty-three, lot sixty and lot fifty-nine, and we will turn it over to Charlie, I'm assuming on behalf of the applicant.
The board, board staff? I believe it is, you see a green light there, so, yep. Am I getting a thumbs up from the, okay, good. So, for the record, Charlie Zilch from SEC, I'm here on behalf of the applicant as well as one of the owners, Bob Griffin, also here on behalf of the other property owners, which we'll go through in a minute, and as you stated, this is for a lot line adjustment application. So this is an application to adjust the lot lines between tax lot R twenty-three sixty-three, which I'll refer to as the big lot, and that's located twenty-three Cheney Road, and then we have two smaller lots, tax lot R twenty-three sixty, located sixteen Ledge Road, and tax lot R twenty-three fifty-nine, located at five Ledge Road. Those are the two smaller lots. Just kind of run through each lot and then the proposal, pretty straightforward. So starting with the big lot, which is sixty-three, lot sixty-three, that's owned by LER Realty Company, care of Robert Griffin. The parcel has approximately eight-hundred-and-ten feet of frontage on the north side of Cheney Road, the property contains approximately ninety-eight acres, and it lies entirely within the rural residential zone. The lot is bounded on the west by the Kingston and Danville Town Line, and by the way, this is best seen on sheet one, I trust everybody has a plan set? So like I said, it's bounded on the west by the Kingston-Danville Town Line, it's also bounded by the little camp lots, it has frontage along Long Pond and the outflow that runs down to Cheney Road. The property is bounded on the east by two other large tracts owned by LER, that's lot sixty-four and sixty-five. It's also bounded by the Oak Ridge Residential Subdivision, and then land of center wraps around the northeast property line as well as the northerly property line of that parcel. So the property itself is undeveloped, it's mostly wooded throughout. The parcel is subject to a private way known as Ledge Road, you can see that on the cover sheet, that leads from Cheney Road and up to Long Pond. That roadway provides access to a number of lake lots, including the two other lots that I previously mentioned that are subject to this lot line adjustment. So going to this two smaller lots, and this is best shown on sheet two. So tax lot sixty is a shared ownership with the Griffin family. This lot is accessed from Ledge Road, it contains one acre, it enjoys two-hundred-and-twenty-five feet of frontage along the shore of Long Pond. Sited on that lot is a single-family residential seasonal camp, the camp is not supported by an onsite well, I believe it draws from the lake, and it does have an onsite privy, there is no state-approved septic system on it, it's a very old camp lot, probably built in the forties or fifties. The lot, again, as with the large lot, is entirely within that rural residential zone. And then, the other small lot included in this lot line adjustment, lot fifty-nine, that's owned by James McDonough and Terry Petzold. This lot is accessed from Ledge Road as well, this can, the lot contains point-four-four acres, and that enjoys one-hundred-and-twenty-nine feet of frontage along the shore of Long Pond. Sited on that lot is a single-family residential home, this is a year-round home, the dwelling is supported by an onsite septic system and well. The lot is subject to an easement, allowing access to the Long Pond Dam, and as the other lots is located in the rural residential zone. So as the board may recall, we were here earlier in the year with a similar application for a lot line adjustment from Mr. Griffin's property located to the east on Cheney Road, east from this application, that is. As with that application, Mr. Griffin is merely focused on management of his properties and wishes to have now the lake lot parcel defined as well as the frontage and westley boundary of the large parcel defined, as done with this survey. In addition, Mr. Griffin intends to add an area to the lake lot that he has, that I mentioned, and to provide the abutting lake lot property owner additional land area as well. So the intent of the application, and again, maybe stay on sheet two for a second here, is simply to add land from lot sixty-three, known as the big lot, to lots sixty and fifty-nine. Parcel A, as shown on sheet two of the plan set, is a zero-point-one-zero acre triangle of land to be added to the southeast side of lake lot sixty. This triangle will capture the driveway entrance at Ledge Road and provide additional area southeast of the camp. This parcel exchange does not affect lake frontage, total area of lot sixty will now be one-point-one acres, previously one acre. Parcel B, as shown on that same plan sheet, is a point-two acre parcel of land to be added to the northeast side of lake lot fifty-nine. This additional land will allow the owners additional room for their intended improvements. Total area of lot fifty-nine will now be point-six-three acres, so it'll increase from point-four-four to point-six-three. So, as noted, that Mr. Griffin owns two other large tracts of land that abut lot sixty-three to the east, lots sixty-four and sixty-five as well, as lot sixty-six located east of the other two properties, those are the ones that were involved in that lot line adjustment that we were here for back in the spring or summer, I think it was. So we now have survey data that defines the entire frontage of all of his holdings. In addition, we have survey data of a portion of both the eastly property lines and westley property lines of his holdings, whereas the remaining land is, of sixty-three is approximately ninety-seven-point-seven acres, we're going to be slightly decreased with this lot line adjustment. It contains still approximately eight-hundred, eight-hundred-and-ten feet of frontage, we would ask the board to waive a full survey of that remaining property. So basically, a good portion of the eastly property line, westley property line, and all the road frontage has been surveyed, there's still a fair portion of the property that hasn't been surveyed on the northerly end of it, so we'd ask for a waiver on that, it really doesn't affect the property and it really doesn't involve these, these smaller lots that we're doing the lot line adjustment on. No known variances for this application, no state approvals required, do have a couple of waivers, the one I just mentioned, and then we have a couple of procedural waivers that were included with the application. We did have comments come in, I think Glenn was all set with the application, Dennis didn't have any additional comments, we did have one request from the road agent, you can see that on sheet three, if you turn your attention to that, he was looking for, basically, the ability to improve Cheney Road eighteen feet out from the edge of pavement, so I was able to capture that by just offsetting the property line or the right-of-way line by ten feet, so that actually gives him a little bit more than eighteen feet, glad to do that, hopefully that, that'll service any additional improvements along the roadway. Phil has taken a look at that and he's signed off on it, so he's satisfied with that additional easement area. There's monuments to be set, we kind of jumped the gun, I didn't think there'd be any issues after we got our happy letters from Glenn and Dennis, so we went out and set the monuments. They're not reflected on this plan, but prior to submitting the Mylar Plan, I'll show where those monuments were set and we'll, we'll provide you the certification letter as well. And that is about it, any questions? Gladly entertain them.
Thank you, Glenn, do you want to cover your brief comments?
He stole all my thunder. I, I just would recommend the board consider invoking jurisdiction, and from my recollection, there are two waivers that we need to vote on, the foregoing of the preliminary, and...
There's three.
Oh, what's the third?
There are three.
Engineering bond?
Okay, I didn't, I didn't care, I didn't care about that one, so, so the board should act on all three of those, and those are my only comments, because the plan looked great.
Motion to invoke jurisdiction.
Motion by Chris Bashaw, second by Peter Baiki, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
And as soon as you offer public comment, I'll get the ball rolling on everything else.
I will offer public comment to the no-public.
Just want to make sure it happens.
Yep, there is no public to comment.
Okay, I will make a motion that we grant the waiver request Town of Kingston Article 905.4A, mandatory preliminary review, the supporting affidavit to this from the applicant, "Dear members or the board, please accept this letter as a formal request in Article 905.4A, requiring mandatory preliminary review, this is an application for a minor lot line adjustment, the proposal is to convey two parcels of land, point-three acres from a ninety-eight acre parcel to resulting lot line adjustment leaves a larger parcel with enough remaining land area and frontage that it still meets and exceeds all zoning requirements. Additionally, the lot line adjustment adds land to non-conforming lots, making them both larger in size, this proposal is intended to comply with all applicable zoning and subdivision regulations where waived, and the reason for my motion is for the provisions provided by the applicant."
Motion by Chris Bashaw, second by Peter Baiki, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
I'll make a motion to grant the waiver request to the Town of Kingston Subdivision Review Regulation, Article 905.14A, point-two, section D, and boundary, boundary in parentheses, lot line adjustment fee Schedule A, engineering cost review, the supporting documentation is follows, from the applicant, "Dear members or the board, please accept this letter as a formal request to waive subdivision review regulation, Article 905.14A, two, D, and boundary lot line adjustment fee Schedule A, requiring the establishment of a five-thousand-dollar engineering review account, and to accept a one-thousand-dollar engineering review account instead. This is an application for a minor lot line adjustment, and as such, any engineering review, if even necessary, would be minimal." My support for the motion is the, as, as the outlined by the applicant's response.
Motion by Chris Bashaw, second by Peter Baiki, any discussion?
Did we even get engineering review? I'm sorry, I didn't see.
It, it pretty much just says he reviewed it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed unanimously.
All right, I'll make a motion to I'll make a motion to grant the third waiver request under the Town of Kingston Subdivision Review Regulation, Article 905.14C, point 13. Supporting information from the applicant is as follows. Dear members or the board, please accept this letter as a formal request to waive subdivision review regulation, Article 905.14C, point 13, requiring full survey boundary of one of the subject parcels. As noted in the letter of intent, this is a proposal to convey two parcels of land totaling 0.3 acres from lot 63, a 98 acre parcel, to lots 60 and 59. The resulting lot line adjustment leaves lot 63 with enough leaning, remaining land area and frontage that it still meets and exceeds all zoning requirements. The waiver is intended for lot 63 only. Lots 60, lots 60 and 59 are shown with fully surveyed boundary. In addition, the remaining 97.7 acres of lot 63 are abutted by Mr. Griffin's two other holdings that contain additional acreage and frontage that support the request. There is enough remaining land area and frontage to ensure that the lot 63 fully complies with this zoning ordinance and a full survey is unwarranted this time. My support for the granting of the waiver is based on the information provided by the applicant in their response.
Motion by Chris Bashaw, second by Peter Baiki. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
So, and I think I just have to make the motion to grant the lot line adjustment as presented by the applicant, noting their granting of the 18-foot, 18-foot addition, plus, plus, right-of-way easement to the, the town so that there could be roadway maintenance conducted.
As well as the setting of the monuments?
Correct. Because I know we do need a, what is it? We need the, something before the Mylar, something, we have to have the final monumentation?
It would be a line, it would be a line of 15 years.
So that would be part of the condition of approval.
Is there a second?
Sir?
Motion by Chris Bashaw, second by Peter Baiki. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. Charlie, I regret not moving you further up in the agenda, so I apologize for that.
No, never apologize. I really appreciate it and thank you very much.
Yes, if you could have been doing anything else.
I know, exactly. Thank you.
Next, on board business, we have the acceptance of the December 12th and January 2nd minutes. Why don't we start with December 12th? Do you have any proposed changes, corrections, or a motion to approve as written?
Nobody with objections? I'll move that we approve the December 12th minutes as presented.
Second? Motion by Peter Coffin, second by Chris Bashaw. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. Moving on, the January 2nd minutes.
One question, when these get recorded in the final version, they do have the color so that will still be there so that people can tell if there's any reference to the, you know, the stuff in red or stuff in purple. Yeah, that's, it's, it's, it's fine with me. I just want to make sure it doesn't get, you know, put into a PDF A that doesn't have color or something. Yeah. So as long as it's online in color and available in print in color, that's fine. I'll move that we accept the January 2nd public meeting minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
Second?
Motion by Peter Coffin, second by Chris Bashaw. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up, we have the capital improvements program, 2024 to 2029.
Those are tough meetings.
Yeah. Did I get left off the invite list?
You, you didn't. It just happened so quickly to get it to the budget committee that we, the CIP committee didn't meet.
We were very much behind the eight ball on this.
This was by direction of the BOS. With a very heavy hammer right over Ben's head.
Developed it, put it together, got pictures at the last minute, but everything that was submitted by the different committees was basically included in some way. And it's a larger list than we've historically had. And so when we meet as a committee this year, we may have to look at prioritizing some of that, but we really didn't do any prioritizing.
And the board really needs to put it on their calendar to start this process much early in the year because the, the reason for the CIP is to help guide the budget committee in the development and the prioritization of those items in the budget. And officially, it got done. Was it really done in time to be effective to assist them? No. And we need to take ownership for that because we dropped the ball on that.
So we used to be on a schedule where we sent everything out in June and had all the meetings start in September. So we'll get back on that framework.
So we do as a board, we need to formally.
You do need to formally adopt it.
So I'll make a motion that we adopt the capital improvements program as prepared for 2024 through 2029. That is, that is considered prepared and put forward by the Kingston Planning Board.
I'll second that.
Motion by Chris Bashaw, second by Peter Coffin. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. And there is correspondence, right? Is this it?
We're just supposed to talk about this and removing it from the ordinance? So that's just an amendment page. And if everyone's okay, we'll just remove it.
We don't need this for like historical purposes to know when.
The background is this, an attorney contacted Tammy Baiki because he was concerned that the online ordinance book wasn't up to date. He wanted all the amendments after 2013. Well, if you go into each, each category, like C3, you'll see it's, there's a line that Ellen's added each time it was amended. She puts the date of amendment on the, on the top. And then it's often in the text also for some things that were added later on. It's just the amendment date that that was added.
So it's redundant?
And it either has to be maintained.
Or taken out.
Or taken out. And it seems more efficient to take it out because it's just more work for somebody to go in and, and try to maintain that.
Do I dare ask the question, is it considered part of the ordinance and it would have to go to warrant to be removed?
No, it's editorial.
Okay. It's editorial? Okay. Thank goodness.
I, I would say that as long as amendment dates are in there, especially since that list of amendment dates, this is the list of town meeting dates because.
Correct.
It doesn't tell you what was amended. So it's.
It's completely editorial.
Motion to remove.
Second.
Motion by Chris Bashaw, second by Peter Coffin. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Any other business that folks have? Oh, oh, that's great.
Was the build-out analysis, is that what that is?
Nope. So I, it's probably okay to summarize this, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay. So this is a letter to the, to Lynn dated January 24th, signed by David Walker, the Assistant Director of the Rockingham Planning Commission, basically alerting us about some changes to the Transportation Advisory Committee, the TAC, and that Peter Coffin is currently appointed to the TAC, but his term is expiring.
Technically, it expired. What happened was, I think Dave Walker and just all of a sudden realized that along about COVID, they stopped sending out letters to renew this. And so at one of the TAC meetings, he said, you guys are going to get a letter saying that everybody's expired, everybody who's on advisory committee is expired and able to send a letter to the Board of Selectmen. And technically, the planning board advises, it's sort of like appointments to the RPC, the planning board advises. Years ago, I volunteered, Ellen Faulkner had done it for a number of years and then nobody had it for a while.
How long's the appointment term?
It's, I think it's only two years or something, but.
It is a two-year period.
Yeah. So, but there's, nobody's been done in the last five years, so.
Okay. Is anyone, I guess before you put somebody forward for appointment, is anyone on that chopping block for voting this year? That's about happening in four weeks. Whereas, I don't know who's running, who's running this year, what spots are open?
Oh, yeah. Robin and I are both.
Okay. And do you have any competition?
I, I don't know. I didn't, no, look, do you know?
I mean, I don't see people beating down the doors to do this, but.
Well, yeah, I, it could be.
And you could still be appointed regardless, correct?
Oh, oh, you don't have to be on the planning board, to be honest. So it's, it, it's quite frankly about as dry a subject line. We talk a lot about federal funds and available and where they're going and what recommendations to make on priorities. Most of it is selecting priorities for spending highway funds. I know, I'm going to U.P. I am, I'm willing to stay on it.
Well, I guess the question is too, is in the spirit of recognizing the newfound involvement that we had at the deliberative session and everyone that's so willing to participate in town, should we at least just post something asking if anyone has an interest in it?
That might be.
If there's anyone that may have a genuine interest.
Especially if there's anybody who has actual highway engineering experience is often a, a good thing, but I don't think Phil's about.
And then if there's no takers, you're probably getting nominated.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. That's, that's one. The other thing is, you know, you can go ahead and send it in and then we can, and we can still send in and say, okay, well, you know, actually, we're appointing somebody else who would rather do it or something.
I mean, we've, we've, there's been a period where we haven't suffered from the appointment expiring.
Yeah, exactly.
What's, what's taking two weeks to, so people can't say, I would have volunteered, but I didn't know about it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, if you want to post that out and see if there's anybody who's interested in doing it again, I think.
So how would that go out?
Rob, and Robin, would you, would you mind just, yeah, where Susan just put, put out a notice, say, hey, if anyone's interested, this is an open vacancy by appointment. If anyone has experience in this, it would be very helpful if anyone's interested in filling this role for the town.
Do we need a motion on that?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Okay.
We're not making a motion to appoint. But it does, it's only a recommendation.
Yeah. Yeah. Board of Selectmen will end up appointing. I do have one item just to notify the board about. The board will be getting contacted. There's a property owner off of Back Road, which is a class six road off of Thorn Road over on that side of town, which heads into Danville. They did come before the Board of Selectmen and they were looking for, sensually, there is provisions in RSA for the selectmen to authorize discussions to move forward about them engaging the planning board and other vested parties in the town regarding being, asking for relief and being allowed to essentially build off of a class six road. If you look at that piece of property or you're familiar with it, there will be a lot of hurdles they have to jump, but the board's consensus was there is a legal venue for you to talk and discuss this. So we don't want to discourage you from being allowed to do that, but we cautioned them that due to how restrictive conservation and the lay of the land out there, I mean, there's a very substantial beaver dam that seems to sit a couple of feet above grade on that class six road on that, towards the end that goes into Danville. So we did caution them that you may find a pathway that it's allowable, but it could be cost prohibitive or there could be other restrictions in place. But we did offer them the opportunity to pursue the legal relief through the RSA. So their next step after discussing with the, the select board was they're going to have to come up with some presentation that they present to the planning board and then it would have an opportunity to be reviewed and commented on by engineering, by the planning board, by conservation and those entities. So they, they will be able to explore that. So anticipate that. You may, you may, you may want to watch the meeting minutes from that, the meeting online from, from that hearing. I don't know. It's, it's way down, it's, it's way down. So.
So they, are they just asking for a building permit? Or are they asking to subdivide?
No, they're asking, they just want the 10 acre lot and they want to put in a single family home, but they need, in order to be allowed to have a building permit off of a class six road, they need permissions from the town. There are avenues where the town can say, yes, we'll allow it, but you're waiving all these rights to emergency apparatus and equipment and stuff like that.
There's no formal planning board.
Tradition.
Authority there.
The RSA allows for a conversation. It's, it's not like approval, but it has to go before different entities for discussion and review and input. And ultimately, the select board is the decision maker off of roadways and has the ability to grant that. But, so we, legally, there's a path for them to open up the conversation. So if you look at, talk to Susan, she can get you all the legal documentation and the provisions of the RSA's regarding that, but you will see something coming down the pipeline.
And one of the things it requires is that the planning board, sorry, in consultation with the planning board, or sorry, after consulting the planning board can then, as Chris says, vote to approve. And then where, this is where I would probably recuse myself from any discussions here because if the select board votes to disapprove, they of course, like anything else, have an appeals process to the.
There would be a ZBA portion of it as well, I believe. And I believe the ZBA is previously denied for this particular property or, or, or maybe it's, they've denied a similar request for building on class six roads in recent history yet.
Yeah, I, that one hasn't, I'd come to ZBA because.
Yeah.
I will talk with Susan.
Yeah. And I would say probably just watch the YouTube video of the meeting for that section. It would probably be helpful.
Robin, did I see you referencing?
Just first. And everyone, the comments are the best. Any comments?
Any comments on the build-out analysis of the Kingston Lake watershed?
I'm, I'm not intelligent enough on that to offer any comments.
I spoke with the developers of this early on, maybe early last fall, because they asked me to look at their descriptions that they had for our zoning ordinances. And I pointed out a couple of things that they had incorrect, but they had mostly everything right. I haven't really looked at this review, but they had incorporated the things I had said in my first review.
So I have no comment?
Yeah. Peter, do you have anything?
No, no.
Okay.
Just, when was that set?
It was set, we were, we were at the meeting.
Oh, okay.
So. It's possible, it could have been set in January, I don't know.
Yeah.
So officially, no comment from anybody?
No comment.
Okay. Any other business? All right. It is 9:33 and this.